All right, so it is 5:30, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the city work session meeting for January 23rd, City Administrista. First order, I'll do a quick roll call here. We have our introductions present this evening for our work session. Our city clerk, Don Matzko, Director of Administration, Ally Palfus. Welcome back, Polly, nice to see you. Ally, thank you for coming and good to see you. Then we have Director of Public Works, we have Gary Peters. And then council members present are Claudia Lacy, Peter Vickery, and Kathleen Refkin. This evening, Ann McGregor is gone. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And then we have Jasper Krugel, our Administrator, and Brian Grimm, Finance Director. So with that, we have two items on our agenda for discussion. Water infrastructure, state bonding bill discussion, and then the employee engagement. So I will hand this over to you, Jasper.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Whalen, members of City Council. Tonight, or today, I just want to talk a little bit about the state bonding bill, the process related to that, and really the projects that we have that potentially could fit into that. And just talk about some of the costs and timing of those things, and just get some input from City Council on if we want to pursue this right now, or if we want to, you know, maybe wait until the project matures a little bit more, you know, and just have that open discussion, so we kind of staff knows what's expected as far as the bonding bill goes. I think most of the City Council, I'm not sure if the new members received an email from Representative Myers asking about, you know, if we have any projects, capital projects, things like that. So it's, and it's also timely with the City Council action that was taken last week, our last meeting about the joint letter just to like Dean Phillips and other representatives that we have that we're working on right now. So, and that's all kind of related to this bonding bill, which is a funding source that we could potentially use if awarded for an infrastructure project like a water treatment plant. So, the conversation I want to have tonight is just kind of have a, kind of set realistic expectations as far as the bonding bill goes. Talk about the project timeline that we currently have with the water treatment plant. We had an update from AE2S a few meetings ago, kind of updating where we're at, what the timeline is, what we're looking at for potential water treatment plant, which we're looking at basically 2025 to install. So I think there was kind of some nervousness about water supply and things like that. I think the water tower that was built, or brought online last year really helped out with some of the challenges we had with the drought last year. The water treatment plant isn't necessarily the bottleneck, but with the growth that we have occurring or likely to occur over the next five years, that'll be something that we definitely have to plan for. And AE2S is doing that through their modeling and things like that. So, back to the bonding bill, kind of the process that entails. It's kind of this great carrot that if we get it, it's something that can really help out the community, you know, as these things, as we know, a water treatment plant is going to be a pretty hefty expenditure. So, looking at that cost per citizen, or actually per water account, that's quite substantial over 20 years, which is what we would typically bond for that. So, looking at that and kind of demonstrating that need to the state, to the legislators that we have, that they should build us in to the bonding bill, that's kind of the process that we'd have to. There's a state bonding bill manual that you have to follow. There's a checklist, I think there's like 22 items on there. There's some pre-engineering that we need to do, some siting. We have to kind of, we basically, I think, they want to make sure that we have a viable project that would be inserted into the bonding bill. Which I think we all know that we need this at some point in time. We're just kind of, I think, right now in a preliminary engineering stages of kind of understanding the system with the new water infrastructure engineer. And then really, the next step is to tie into the need and then location, you know, the sizing and then the location of the water treatment plant. So, the initial pre-engineering request needs to be in by May. So we're kind of, we only have a few months before May. And I just want to make sure that, I think we could scramble to put something together to request it. But I think from a staff perspective, talking with Brian and a little bit with Gary is looking at letting the project mature naturally. There's also a buildup of bonding bill requests, since I think the last couple of years there hasn't been, there hasn't been a bonding bill that's been funded. So, everything from, I believe, 2021 and 2022 is still hanging out there and will be evaluated. I also know the state has a surplus as well, which, you know, maybe affects the bonding bill and maybe the appetite to take on a larger bonding bill because of that surplus. But that surplus will likely be gone at some point in time in the next few years, as I think some, those things generally go, they find purposes for those. So, looking at that, you know, so the direction we're kind of looking for is, is this something that we want to proceed with as far as kind of putting together a request, going through the manual and getting everything lined up to do a request in May? I would say personally, and I don't know, Brian at some point will weigh in, I'm sure, you know, the likelihood of us getting together a successful application with the information that we have right now in 2023 might be challenging. I just want to make sure that the group knows that. If we allow the project to kind of mature naturally and go through the process that we've kind of defined, and try to shoot for like a 2024 maybe compilation application, and maybe a 2025 bonding bill, depending on if they, they might do a bonding bill in 2024, depending on the market and the appetite, just because they took a couple of years off. You know, but I would think for sure in 2025, they would have another bonding bill. If that's something that we want to do, I would recommend, as the project matures, to have that kind of bonding bill idea built into some of the services that AE2S would be providing us, so that we can kind of have that go in conjunction. And say, here's the checklist, here are the things that we need to complete, build that into the total project costs as we develop the plans for a water treatment plant. So, I don't know if there's other input that the group needs from me or Brian or Gary on this, but really we want to, you know, I think the question has been out there, the idea has been out there that pursue this bonding bill. I just want to see what the take is from City Council, if that's something you want us to do this year, or just kind of wait and let it organically happen as the project matures. So, I'll entertain questions.
Yep, questions. Peter?
Is this something that we have to do most of this work anyway? Is this just speeding up kind of the process, you know, if we want to get it done by May or to make an application?
So, it is, so some of it is redundant from what we would need to do through the normal just project process. Some of it is above and beyond what we normally would have to do. I don't even know if it's like physically possible to do a lot of it by May. Like, I don't think it's just a matter of throwing money at the problem to get them to move faster. I think it's, there's a process that just takes time to get the project to mature. So, the timing's just a little off, I would say, to pursue it this year. We could definitely get our project into the mix. I just don't know if it'll have the application materials well-defined enough so that it's actually considered a viable project.
If we submit it and it's not being viable, can we resubmit it again?
You can.
Or is it a one and done?
No, you can, I mean, those things, a lot of times the bonding, if it's not in the bonding bill one year, it just kind of keeps riding, you know, if you keep it on there. It'll either, the project, if it's, you know, a necessity, it'll either get done by the local agency or whatever, or it'll just keep getting evaluated in the bill. And, you know, eventually if it's not in the bill for a few cycles, it'll likely not even be supported by your local representatives, because they'll have other things that maybe are more viable.
Claudia?
Well, when you said, you know, the state has a surplus now, I think to get it in front of them as soon as, sooner than later, makes more sense to me.
The only thing probably to consider a little bit though is, I know a lot of it isn't more that they're operational, their general fund surplus. I mean, they're already allocating, I thought I read in the paper today, you know, fully funding K through 12 education. The bonding bill I think comes from a lot of different other sources.
Well, they bond for it, that's why it's called a bonding bill.
Yeah, no, but you know, I mean, the surplus is sort of, I think, going to be, as Jasper said, sort of spoken for in some of the more operational ways. For the bonding bill, it could be 500, you know, I don't know, whatever, billions almost up there versus, you know, versus 750 billion or whatever, so.
Setting all that aside, because we have no idea on that, but my question would be, how much would it cost us today if we wanted to try and get something in front of, get an application in by May? What would it cost us today? And how much of that money can then be, or how much of that process can be used next year again?
Yeah, there's a lot of unknowns with that. I think a lot of it's tied to some of the pre-engineering things we need to do. And at this point in time, we don't exactly know where that water treatment plant will go. So that's one of the biggest challenges. Some of the pre-engineering requirements have some site requirements, you have to kind of understand the site, soil conditions, that type of thing. Which, I think we'd have to make some assumptions and say, well, it's going to go where the test wells are. But as the water model gets developed, there might be a better location that's still able to access the aquifer that we want, that's maybe closer to some infrastructure. So our infrastructure tie-in costs are lower. We just don't know that yet. So, we would have to make some assumptions with some of those things.
Where else could it go?
Well, so it's kind of a, I'd call it, I'm a GIS person, mapping person. It'd be an exercise to look at where we think, where there's available land, where we could tie it into infrastructure that exists, that's sized correctly. And then we'd have to weigh those costs. Maybe there is some land acquisition costs and we'd have to weigh, well, we're going to have to acquire some land versus putting in $2 million with the water infrastructure, you know, so we'd have to weigh that cost benefit, so.
I mean, I thought that's how we, I thought that was the like ideal spot based on the wells and the land that we were going to get from AMI, and we're taking part of the dedicated parkland for it.
It is.
So, I mean.
The problem is it's not near any infrastructure that's sized correctly. So there's a large component of a future project that we would have to put in larger, either replace existing or put in larger in parallel infrastructure. So, if there's a location that we could maybe move it to, that we can tie in to.
Depending on how much the additional infrastructure would cost versus what it would cost to purchase another parcel. So let's say the infrastructure costs 500,000, but the parcel costs 300,000. Okay, you have a $200,000 delta there. But if it's 300,000 to, for the infrastructure and 300,000 for the property, you might as well stick with the property that we already have. So, we don't, do we, we don't know that?
We don't know that yet. The other piece is the long-term maintenance on all of the, you know, if you put in two miles of water main, you know, in 50 years, that'll have to be replaced, you know. So that's the other component, long-term maintenance that we'd have to look at. Flushing, exercising valves, all that, you know, the more infrastructure you have. So, in all likelihood, I see some looks, like it very well could be in that location. But if there's a better location that saves us money.
No, I'm just curious where the better location would be, because obviously it's got to be somewhere tied into the south system. So are you looking up closer to Hunter's Press then?
No, it has to be in that.
I mean, it has to be in that area of Woodland Cove, correct? I mean, and there's homes that are next to the current tree and plants and all the infrastructure, and that's how they're building, so, I mean, unless you're going to get the Three Rivers Park area and take down some trees.
Yeah, no.
Because that's the other viable option.
I don't think we know, that's the deal, like we haven't, it hasn't been analyzed enough to know where that other potential location could be. But we know that there's some challenges with tying it in with the, you know, infrastructure tie-in pieces.
The other thing you have to think about is residents.
Yeah, no. You can't stick it in the middle, actually the pool house, it's not going to work.
Or next to somebody's house, because they're going to say, wait, wait, wait a minute, we bought this place thinking there was going to be a house next door. You know, so I mean, there's a lot of different things we have to consider other than just the infrastructure and so on. And that's why I think originally we were thinking that corner would be great. So we might have to bite the bullet and just put in more infrastructure.
That very well could be the case. I think that's probably the more likely case right now, based on the information that we have. But, you know, if our water engineering group comes up with a better location, better place, it's going to, you know, ultimately can demonstrate it's going to save us money, both short-term and long-term, I think we'd have to, I'd look at it.
Because don't easements come, I remember with the whole centralized versus decentralized plants, I mean, two miles worth of easements is a heck of a challenge, and we started going through that exercise.
We don't need that though, it's going to go through the park.
Is it okay?
It's going to go through the park, and I can't imagine we can't get it eased. And it's public, that park is public park.
That's good, yeah.
So we would have to give ourselves, and it's a city park, so we would have to give ourselves the easement. Let's see, will that happen?
Sure. There would be some challenges for, you know, joining up the infrastructure that, you know, to the infrastructure at the location that we're looking at right now. But, you know, if it would move into, you know, into a residential, more towards residential area. The beauty of a water plant is it's a quiet neighbor, you know. I mean, if you do some Google searches, I mean, they're out there, all over in neighborhoods, they look like houses and stuff, you can blend them into the neighborhood really nice. I mean, yeah, it costs a lot more money to do the, you know, the facial work on there to make it look nice, but they'll blend in, I mean, a lot of people don't even know they're there.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you can have them look just like a house in the neighborhood, I mean, basically. So, so yeah, I guess what we're looking for, I'm looking for a direction, because what this would entail if we would proceed with trying to get this application in, likely you'll see a task order from AE2S to assist with this. I haven't gotten word back from Aaron Volmer, our engineer for that. They do have experience in this, they've helped Morehead out with some of these bonding bill requests. So, they do have experience, which is good, because that always helps. Yeah, but the individual that would be working with us was out all of last week, so I haven't heard back. I'm guessing, you know, probably in that 20,000 to 30,000 range. Some of that's duplicate work that we're going to.
Could use.
Could use, I don't know what portion of that is.
Right, that's what I was wondering.
So I don't know what that information is, but if it's something that you would like us to pursue, I can definitely, we'll gather more information and, you know, but we have to get going on it, because time is kind of.
What does it fee, so like, won't the projects be allocated by May? Or how is that working?
It's kind of on the PFA schedule, where it would get on a list, it'd be evaluated by a committee to score, it'd go through committees in the legislature, then it'd either get put into the bill, likely we could get our representatives, put in, one of our representatives, put it in the bill. Then at that time, when the bill actually gets passed, there's a lot of horse trading in the DJ's, on there or not, and, you know, if it doesn't get supported, it might get pulled out. But we will have a lot of the work done for future application. So it's a lot of unknown, it's not something that's, I don't know, easily predictable.
Well, hold on, you're next. Here's maybe an idea, maybe you could bring back a work order and, at our next meeting, and then we can find out, okay, of this 20 or 30,000, whatever that is, how much is that reusable for the actual project? And/or how much, if we don't, if it doesn't, if we decide that, and how much is it going to cost us to do that? I think that's the big thing, how much is it going to cost? And then how much will be reusable? We can get that and then be ready to say, okay, yes, go ahead at our next meeting? That might be a good thing, because I don't know if it's going to be 20,000, or 10,000, or 30,000. And then we don't know of that, let's just say it's 30,000. I don't know of that, how much can we actually use for the actual project? Because you said design, so I'm guessing a lot of that money is going to go into the design of it, or initial design, which we'd have to do anyway, right?
Initial site survey, that type of thing. So we'd have to make the assumption tonight that it would be in the location of the test wells, in that general vicinity.
I think in general, we make that assumption anyways, because that's what residents right now have been told. So unless something that's substantially less expensive is, I mean, because everyone who lives over there is expecting it to go there right now.
Yeah.
And it probably aims at those people.
It's a good location.
Well, AMI, unless.
But the other thing is, what if, what if we change the location? It's still a viable project, so just because the location changes, do we not get the bonding money? Let's just say they give us the bonding money, and then we say, well, the better location for this is here, do we not get the money?
No, I mean, we would.
Yeah.
Well, you asked most of what I was going to ask, thank you. But here's a crazy question. I would think if we'd have our own city engineer, it would be easier to do these things. It would be easier to have this ready, and it doesn't seem like a big expense.
Parts of it, for sure, yeah, definitely, there's parts that we would.
You can walk down the hall and ask questions.
Well, you can't, the only thing is you have to keep in mind, a city engineer doesn't necessarily know roads, water towers, treatment plants, infrastructure, wetlands, all of these, there's like probably 10 different areas of engineering expertise. So, one engineer isn't going to know that. One engineer could maybe manage some of the projects. They can't design them, or they can't, nor do they have the time or even the software and the capability to design all this stuff themselves. If you wanted to do that in-house, you'd probably have to have three or four people on staff.
Yeah, I would, sorry, if I may, I would run it in parallel with kind of what Allison does. She's more like manages the projects, manages the team underneath that, that's what I think a city engineer in the municipal sense would be doing. They'd be able to do some things, like some small design projects likely, something like that. But in general, they're kind of managing like a group, which we could have, you know, other people underneath them internally too. So, this is something that we're going to be looking into a little bit through the strategic planning discussion process, so, yeah.
The only other comment, just not to be a downer or whatever, but is maybe this is a rhetorical question either for Jasper, the councils, what, how much money is the council willing to spend based on what percent chance do we think we're going to get it? Is it, if it's a 10% chance, is it, we're spending 25,000? I mean, there is the ability to pay that I think goes into these bonding bills, and obviously they rank, you know, City of Elysian, you know, I think was an example of, you know, that's in the bonding bill, I think, not or whatever.
For 2022, the city, so there's a couple, Wasika has a water treatment plant, and Elysian has one, that was proposed in 2022.
And how many water users are on the Wasika one, for instance?
Well.
It'd be less than 10.
Well. See, the thing is, is you can't go by our population, because, I mean, three-fourths of our population is not on city water. So, we only have about, what, 1,900 water users, 1,900 accounts?
True.
You know, so.
About 60% of our population is probably on water. I mean, if you go 2,000 accounts times three people a house, or whatever, 6,000, I think, well, about two-thirds. 60% to two-thirds, or whatever.
But, so all I'm saying though is, if there's, if Wasika is, let's say, a population of 6,000, sure, they're smaller than us, but they probably have as many users or more than we do. And so I think that's something, if we do apply, that's something we really, really need to make clear that even though we're 9,000, nearly 9,000 population, we only have 1,900 users on the water system.
Yeah, correct, yeah, and one of the metrics is the cost per user applicable resident. So, that's something that we would look at, for sure.
I think the key is finding out how much the work order from AE2S would be, and then go from there again, because if, I mean, if a lot of it is duplicate, then yeah, if the cost is 25,000 now, or 25,000 in September, October, okay.
Yeah.
How much is duplicate of that, and then go from there. And pending that, I say we do it, because why wouldn't we want to try? And then nothing else, everything ready for next year's bonding bill if they do it. And I'm assuming Mound is going to be putting one in, and all the neighboring communities that need water infrastructure too, so.
Just, I was going to say, just for comparing it, I know, PFA, I can't remember back what the engineers quoted. I mean, there was, I mean, we got a 1% interest rate, so it was great, we did the PFA loan, but it was dozens, if not hundreds, of additional pages of stuff to do. So it wasn't, I can't remember, 20,000 of additional work, or just at least give an expectation that, you know, maybe it's.
Look, that's why I'm saying next time, when you come, let's be prepared with that number. How much is it going to cost us to actually apply for it? And then how much of that, if we don't get it this in '23, how much can be reused? So in other words, maybe we have to pay an extra 2,000 or 3,000 in '24 to submit the same application, or to fix it, or to modify it.
And then if we don't get it, we can tell our residents, we've been trying to get the bonding bill, and they're not accepting it, versus our residents being mad that their rates are not going up because we couldn't get on the bonding bills.
Or we didn't ask.
Or we didn't ask.
And I would say, kind of thinking about this funding piece, if the direction would be to pursue a bonding bill application at any time in 2023 or 2020, you know, I would say 100% of the cost would then be, you know, covered. You know, if you're looking at it that way, that's just going to be part of the project, and that's the direction. So I would say, you know, there isn't going to be a gap necessarily.
The other thing, if it's not, if we don't get the money and we end up doing the project, we're talking about an eight to 12 million dollar project. So, I hate to say it like this, because I know every dollar counts, but what is 20,000? I mean, you know, when you think about 12 million, and so we have 20,000, and we have to eat 30,000. I don't.
No, and don't get me wrong, there's no doubt that we're going to pursue the bonding bill at some point in time, it's just the timing of it.
Yeah, I know the timing is a little off. But let's see if we can do it this year. You know it's going to cost a little more maybe, and then bring that back at our February 6th meeting.
Yeah.
And then we can see all those numbers and then make a final decision. But I think we're sort of heading in that direction, that we want to try it this year, okay?
That works.
All right. All right, next. Oh, this is a fun one. Okay, employee engagement.
Yeah, Mayor Whalen, members of council, I just wanted to talk a little bit about some ideas that maybe I didn't come up with on my own 100%, but just some things that I think we're going to do a little differently, employee engagement-wise internally, you know, kind of now that some of the COVID stuff and restrictions are easing, or they're over, you know, kind of bringing it back to kind of normalcy with some of the kind of group meetings that we have. So a couple of things, I'll just jump right into it, that I'd like to start doing in 2023. And this is, you know, things that Brian and other staff members have brought up that they think are beneficial, and I think they're beneficial too. All-staff meetings, so the idea is to bring all the staff that are able to come in, kind of over a lunch period, maybe, I have three of these meetings kind of scheduled throughout 2023 already. Have them over lunch, have the department heads give updates, kind of what's going on in their departments, like, you know, David would give an update on just building permits, and, you know, maybe the grocery store and things like that. Because I know that the front desk folks get a lot of questions, people calling in. I know Gary's people get a lot of questions from residents as they're out. The police officers get a lot of questions. So kind of the frontline employees that are out in the public a little bit more than, say, me or Brian, or, you know, some of the directors that are more in the office a lot, they can answer some of those kind of easy questions. So, just kind of, it's kind of pretty standard practice to try to have some of these group meetings. But the whole idea is they would be over lunch, lunch would be provided. I want to make sure City Council understands that. Brian's talked to the auditors about this, because they try to get us to not do lunch meetings. You know, just so that it's not, not necessarily like not do them, but make sure that you need to do them, you know. And in this case, talking to them, you know, with everybody back in City Hall in this area, that's the right time to do it, because people are here, that you'll have their attention, and it's the most convenient time for everybody to schedule. So, I think auditing-wise, if that's a question that, I think that it's fine, as long as we have a modest meal, we're not ordering in, you know, expensive things, and, you know, that type of thing. We cannot have it turned into some sort of social event, that's definitely prohibited per state statute. But if it's a training component, or employee appreciation, or employee update, that type of thing, that's what we're looking at doing. So, I've got three of those planned for this year, looking for direction, just, you know, is it okay? Because you'll see that on the expenditures moving forward. You know, likely it'll be, you know, conservatively, probably $15 a person, you know, for lunch. So if we get 30 people in attendance, that turns out to be about $450. So, and I think that's probably a little, little high from what it would actually be. So, having those, eventually I'll have a conversation about, you know, maybe like an employee appreciation, employee recognition program.
We used to do that.
Yeah, tying it to also planning commission, or commission appreciation event too. And I've talked to Sarah about all of these things, and she's given the go-ahead following state statute, that it's, you know, modest and not extravagant, not a social thing, but appreciative of the commission members. So, kind of showing our commission members who get no pay, we ask them to do a lot of things for us from a City Council standpoint, to give us guidance, Peter knows, that, you know, we appreciate it, and it's very common for cities to do an event to appreciate. You can, and then you can, you know, welcome in incoming members and then honor the ones that are leaving. We're doing that tonight here, just via a resolution. But that's another component, just kind of some of these things that create an atmosphere, you know, both internally and externally with some of the commissions, to be more favorable to the employee and the volunteers that we have. So, looking at that. So looking at that, this is kind of just the first kind of baby step to, to getting this kind of off the ground. But just want to get some input from city council on it to see if they're, they're okay with it because you'll be the ones approving the expenditures and I want that on the, you know, expenditure list if you, if you guys aren't comfortable with it.
I think it's a good idea.
I don't have a problem with it. I think you cap the spending at $500 per event and you have to figure out food and drinks within that budget. Assuming Brian has the money for that budget.
Yeah, well, the neat thing is, is like, you know, people will still bring in their desserts and stuff too. So it'll be, it's, it's a good, I mean, it's a really good group of people and, no.
Yeah, sounds like a great idea.
I think it's good for employee morale and, and like you said, so that the frontline workers have a clue as to what's going on. And to know that, not only that, but, you know, that their council supports them and, and that we support this and I think that's, that's all good.
Well, one other thing I'll mention is I, I created this, I called it the Employee Relations Team and it consists of members of each of the divisions. So there's five basic divisions in your departments, we'll call them. But it's not non-directors and they're kind of part of the committee that will help kind of set the agenda, pick the food, you know, that type of thing for those things. So getting those people involved, that kind of takes the pressure off against me and Ally for picking out food and like, you know, those types of things. So kind of pass the buck to them. So, and I think that that'll organically morph into some other things too. You know, having a committee like that just internally, to have an internal voice to, you know, both leadership and city council. You know, so I like to keep that going too.
All right.
And if you guys have other ideas that you see working in your everyday lives that, you know, we want to implement here, you know, I think we talk about it because the, the, the work atmosphere that we have right now is we want to retain the folks that we have, right? We don't want to be losing people and hiring. So we want to continuously, you know, make sure that the work environment is conducive to, to keeping people and keeping people happy, making sure that people feel heard and that type of thing. So if there's tactics that you know of that maybe I don't, feel free to share them.
Well, the one thing, I haven't done it now for a few years because of COVID. But when I first came on board as mayor, I did a, an annual all-staff meeting with the mayor. So it's a little different than what he's doing, but, so I plan on doing that in March, so just so you know. So I will invite everybody, public works and staff. So that'll be an event. But it's also a way to connect to the, all of the employees that we don't see very often with, with city council, with myself and, and to show them our, our appreciation for what they do. Because we do have a, we have a really good staff, everybody. And I think sometimes, I mean, you guys hear that here, but I think sometimes the people that are not here all the time, like Darcy and Renee and Angie and, and the public works crews, they don't always hear that. So it's good for them to hear that too. We appreciate, and that they're part of the team, an integral, important part of that team.
Yeah, I think my staff is excited to hear that these were sort of coming back or however, or whatever format. Just, I mean, it is a chance to be able to ask some questions and interact. And, and obviously when we have either council meetings or management meetings, I take back what I know, but I may not know everything, you know, or something, or most, but I guess not everything. But no, I, I think it's, it's a good thing, so.
Okay, other comments? Oh, and Ally, just FYI, we do need to do, we should also restart, which we used to do, an annual State of the City address.
Yes, Jasper's talked to me about that.
All right.
We're on it.
All right.
On it.
All right, so we'll bring you back a date for that. And that's more for community, not for staff, but community engagement, which is always good.
Yeah, and the other thing you mentioned is bringing back the bus tour this year.
Yep, if you, if we have it in our budget and you want to do it, I know everybody that did it, I would just thought it was great.
Yeah, I've never done that. That was before my time, but if that's the thing the council wants to do, I can plan it.
Yep.
It's a great experience. You really get to know the city a lot better. And it's so, the city's so big. You get a real sense of that.
How many people are on that? I, I've heard so much about that.
So there's, the bus can hold 50 or 55, something like that.
I don't know. Probably more than me. Those are on there. You filled it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and, and if council, council members are welcome to, to participate or come along too, we just have to notice it, I think. And we won't be talking business. We, we do the tour. So, but it's, it is interesting and it's fun. When we first decided to do this, we said it's going to be a three-hour tour. And somebody said, three hours? What are you going to do in three hours? And then, so that councilperson came along and she said, wow, it went by so fast. So it, it does go by fast, so, yeah, it would be fun to do. We usually do it in June. Um, just because it's daylight hours longer, so that's, and yeah, it's like kind of mid, beginning to mid, mid-June.
Yeah, I have, because Sanders will like planning documents too, so.
Good.
We'll revive it.
Okay, so we should start thinking about that and get that on the calendar too, so that we can publish it.
Perfect.
And the only other thing I would say is when people sign up, we need to take miniature residents first and foremost and then put others that are not miniature residents on a waiting list and then they can participate if we have room.
Perfect. Can do.
Okay. All right. Yeah, because, let me know, because I have to call the Westonka Historical Society to see if they, and then the DNR too, to see who they can. Or not, did the DNR, I'm sorry, Three Rivers.
Yeah, maybe we set those dates sometime in February.
Yeah.
For April and June.
Okay.
Bring it by the council.
Sounds good.
Cool.
All right. Any other engagement discussion?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
All right, with that, I think we're, we're done for our work session. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? All those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 4-0. So Kathleen made that motion and Peter seconded. Thank you. We are adjourned for, oh, jeez, almost an hour. 50 minutes.